Welcome to Straight from the Source with Haley Watts. Our guest today is Don Belza, former Marysville City Council member and also running for Assembly District 3. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today.
Okay, so Marysville, this is a city that's in our area. We have viewers in Marysville, but we don't get out there as often. Except, you know, the one key thing that comes to mind for me, of course, is the hotel fire.
Yeah.
Where do things stand with that right now?
Well, um, right now, we're the, you know, we, we worked through a pretty diligent process as far as what to do with it when the fire happened. Um, you know, the, the city ended up with the property and we tore the, the building down. So now, I mean, all the debris is still there. It's covered up, obviously. Um, and there's some grant funding that's coming through in order to get rid of that. And then the city will most likely sell the property, right?
I mean, that property was, it's funny, once it burned down in a fire, everybody referred to it lovingly as this iconic, uh, you know, historic property. But it was kind of a blighted building, right, beforehand?
Yeah, the initial fire happened in, I think, 1983. And so, um, you know, the building changed hands a number of times from one development company to another development company. The owners that had it when the, when the last final fire happened, uh, they had purchased it, I think, in 2007. And there'd been a number of discussions and, and plans on what to do with it. And, you know, condo conversions, you know, all kinds of different redevelopment ideas. Um, we actually were, were very close to seeing something happen in 2023. And the owner of the hotel, uh, his name was Lance Robbins. He was actually submitting plans and we were seeing some real progress as far as redevelopment goes. And then he passed away and, um, you know, the property was owned by an LLC. And so it changed hands and whoever had that LLC took it over. And then just a matter of a few months later, they had actually put it on the market. And then the, uh, the building caught on fire and burned down.
Were you ever concerned that this could have been, could have happened? Did you have any idea that, gosh, this is a potential fire risk?
Well, yeah, obviously. I mean, it was a blighted building in town. We'd had a lot of discussions on what to do with it and other buildings in town as well. Um, you know, it wasn't as if we were apathetic to the issue. The city was constantly in communication with the owners. Um, we'd issue different fines when they were necessary, et cetera. Um, the ownership for the last decades have, you know, had, had stayed up on that, stayed current on their property taxes, et cetera. And so it was this ongoing issue that Marysville has been dealing with for 30 years longer.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so you wrapped up your time on council last year, 2024. You, you're a real estate agent, also a farmer. I mean, which hat do you wear the most often?
I wear a lot of different hats. Um, you know, I'm pretty involved as far as management goes with some of the family businesses, including the farming stuff. We've got Rice Ground down in Yuba County. Um, we've also been involved in a lot of different real estate ventures, um, real estate development, et cetera. Actually developed quite a few apartment complexes up here in the, in the late 70s and early 80s. This is before I was involved, obviously. Um, so coming out of that type of a background, um, you know, on a day to day, what I do is, is commercial real estate investment brokerage and then farm real estate as well. So, you know, we're working on, you know, larger office complexes, industrial type properties, et cetera.
How is commercial real estate doing in the state recently? It seems like with so many people doing, working from home or kind of remote sort of things that we're seeing less of a need for commercial real estate.
You have to think about commercial real estate and its sectors, right? Office, retail, office or, or industrial apartments. Um, certain sectors have done okay. Other sectors have done not so well, especially during the pandemic. Um, office properties took a really big hit in vacancy. Um, retail properties fared okay. But there's a lot of shifts that, that happen and, and a lot of issues that come up just on consumer demand, um, logistics, highways, infrastructure that have an impact regionally on all these different, uh, sectors, right? And so in the big picture, you know, interest rates are high. It makes it tough for companies to want to expand. Um, regulation in California is a, a big issue for a lot of these businesses. So we see businesses leaving the state. Bed Bath &amp; Beyond just came out with their announcement uh, that they're not interested in doing business in California. And so, you know, those are issues that are impacting the real estate sector. But, you know, they're all tied together. All these businesses, whether it's Amazon, you know, delivery or the grocery store, et cetera, they're all connected. And they all have an influence on each other, right? So, you know, for the last 20 years, I've been working in that industry and navigating those issues with different businesses and, and the challenges and having to overcome those issues. And it's not just in the commercial real estate world. It's also in the farming world, right? I mean, not only do we have farmland, but I deal with farmers all the time. And, and, you know, my career is dependent upon how well the economy is doing and how well agriculture is doing. And so, you know, having to live it out and, and actually having an impact on, you know, my livelihood is, uh, I'm very well versed in it.
Yeah, I mean, the things that we're the most passionate about sometimes are the things that directly impact us. That's why we understand why they're so important.
Sure.
Back to the real estate thing for just a minute.
Yeah.
So something I've been kind of curious about is we have so many strict laws in California, right? About say a certain property is zoned for, say, commercial, right? But maybe it's there sitting vacant for years. And there's also in that same community a need for more affordable housing. Do you think that in capacity as Assembly member, if you were to get that role, um, there is something that we could do to kind of loosen the rules about like what a property could be used for?
I think that, you know, the affordable housing, obviously, there's already been a lot of rules and laws coming out of Sacramento that's opened this up, right, for affordable housing. Even with the, uh, the hotel property that we were talking about in downtown Marysville. You know, when, when a city wants to sell excess real estate, it has to go through a process and a timeframe in which a developer can look at uh, affordable housing opportunities there, right? Um, I think that it, it's a little bit frustrating, especially for smaller communities because although affordable housing is a need, right, obviously, I mean, we have some of the highest housing costs in the nation, right? Um, each community is unique unto itself. And so when you take away that local decision and those local laws for land use, um, there could be crippling results because of that. So I'll take Marysville, for example. Marysville is landlocked, basically. We've got rivers on two sides and then flood zone on the other side. And, um, and we don't, we can't grow anywhere, right? So when the state comes through with, with requirements like housing elements that say you've got to build so many different affordable housing units before you can start really looking at market rate units. For a community like Marysville, we say, well, where do we put all this affordable housing? How do we do it? And then, and then how do we cover the cost of providing services to that affordable housing? When in reality, we already had a tremendous amount of affordable housing, you know, complexes, especially in regards to Section 8. And, and you look at some of our senior living complexes. And so population wise and demographic wise, we already had a lot of affordable housing. So when the state comes through, gives us a mandate, says, hey, you've got to uh, come up and, and build out so much more affordable housing. How is it feasible, right? And so we're not the only ones that face that issue, right? So I don't want to see that overreach and that overregulation as a blanket thing or even just in general, right? I think these are things that, and decisions that need to be made by the local city council, the local supervisors that understand the community, understand the demographics and can develop that land use based off of what the needs of the local community are.
So Marysville doesn't even, being that it's essentially locked in and can't really expand outwards. I think during your time, there was at least one development project that was pitched, right? But didn't move forward.
Um, well, there was a number of different development projects that were pitched. Some that did move forward. Um, yeah, I mean, there's, there's always different development projects being pitched.
There are several things in the works. Are there any particular that stand out to, in, uh, come to mind to you uh, that you thought were great ideas and you were happy to see move forward? Or, or ones that you voted against? And if so, why?
Yeah, so, um, you know, there's two, two major development projects that I think I would speak to in Marysville. Um, you know, one thing on the, on the affordable housing side of it, there's an issue that, that comes up with the state requirements that says, um, you know, the, the, the property owners get tax breaks, right? Because they're building the affordable housing units. But then those tax, tax breaks come out of the real estate taxes, right? And those real estate taxes actually come back into the local community that help fund the essential services that go into those properties, right? Sewer connections, uh, police, fire, right? And parks, all these different things where you have a project that's going to increase the population. So, you know, the way that the mandates come down from the state is that the local community has to continue to provide those services. Yet there was no revenue coming back from that property in order to be able to supplement those costs, right? So for a community like Marysville, that's a big hit for us, right? Every year, those, those real estate taxes are now deferred or, or they're credited back to the developer. And we don't see that, right? Yet we're still having to provide those services for that development, right? So one of those projects, and you know, there's a, there's some different parameters that go into all of that. And so, you know, I definitely understand. I've never been against the need for affordable housing in California. But there has to be a better approach. There has to be a better system in the state of how smaller communities like Marysville or Yuba City, Chico, Red Bluff, right? Willows, Orland, Corning, Oreville. How, how to supplement the local community for the costs of those properties, for the costs of those projects that come in without just putting the whole burden back on the local community. If the state's going to give a mandate, we saw the same thing happen in regards to the, uh, digitalization of dispatch programs, right? Where the state comes in and mandates that we had to move from an analog system to a digital system. That was a statewide mandate, but then it's unfunded by the state, right? And so now a local community has to foot that bill. It ended up costing us almost a million and a half dollars to make that transition. And when you're talking about a local city that's running on a 13, 14 million dollar budget, that's a big hit. You don't get to just come up with that money somehow. And so...
What can you do about it?
Well, we've got to, well, number one, raise awareness of it for those rural and smaller communities, right? Larger communities can, can take that hit a little bit differently, right?
Should they have to, even if they can?
I don't think they should, right? I think if the state's going to put out a mandate and require that we move down a certain road, then the state needs to also address, address how that funds, right? And how, where those funds come from. And so it's a matter of prioritizing what the items are and looking at, at the state budget and, and identifying where cuts would have to be made and identifying where those dollars are going to come from in order to help those local, smaller communities, right?
Yeah.
Um, and, and so that's, you know, so that's one project that came through that, um, you know, I wasn't in support of. It was actually going from a, a 50 unit project up to a 70 unit project. I wanted answers on how the state was going to help us foot the cost of that property for a 50-year timeframe. That's how long the tax credits are available for, right? Uh, one project we're really proud of in Marysville is, um, it was actually kind of an albatross property. It was five acres right across from Ellis Lake, catty corner from the ball field in Marysville. And, um, the city bought it back in 2001 with the idea that they were going to, um, resell it, basically. I don't think the government needs to be in land speculation by any means. But at the time, the council had made a decision that they were going to buy this property and that they were going to, uh, try to sell it to another developer to, uh, put in a grocery, you know, shopping center type thing. Well, there were some issues with the property that came up after they had purchased it. And after the city had, and, um, there, there...
Kind of issues?
So there was actually an underground petroleum pipeline, a Kinder Morgan pipeline, um, that needed to be moved. And the cost of that, I think, was near eight million bucks.
Oh, wow.
And so the city purchased the property for like two and a half million bucks. And an eight million dollar issue like that, number one, how did we not know about it? We're the city of Marysville, right? I mean, so there should have been more due diligence on that front. And keep in mind, I was not on the council when that decision was made. But nonetheless, we had to bond in order to deal with these issues, the city did, and took on an extreme amount of debt. So the council before us actually, um, moved some of those bonds around and unencumbered that five acre parcel. And when I came on the council, it was kind of a, a really neat opportunity because I was able to use a lot of my real estate background and just the knowledge and experience that I had. We were actually able to develop a process to, you know, entertain developers to come in and look at that property where a more traditional process, I think, for a local jurisdiction would be to use consultant, consultant, consultant. And we actually were able to create a hybrid. Um, and it saved the city a few hundred thousand dollars in consultant fees by working through, um, more of a, you know, market approach rather than just a consultant approach. And so trying to get creative about ways to save local community dollars. Like I said, in Marysville, $500,000 goes a long way, you know? And, uh, so what we landed there was a project that's actually going to bring in a Hyatt Hotel. Uh, you know, a long-term stay hotel that, that is going to service our local hospital. Um, we have a lot of people that come into our local hospital for extended stay services for whether it's two weeks, three weeks, a month, et cetera. And then also there's a lot of overflow that comes up from the Hard Rock Casino that's also going to service it. Uh, so we were able to land that and they're actually breaking ground on it right now. And it was kind of a great opportunity to be able to lead the charge in that process and, and, you know, benefit the city, right? Here's this albatross property that's been there for almost 25 years. And now we're seeing it come back onto the books as a, as a positive thing for the community and a, a income generator, right?
Yeah, okay. So, so we talked about affordable housing quite a bit. Now, I've heard it posited that the healthcare crisis in rural Northern California, uh, doctor shortage essentially sometimes has to do with the fact that there isn't enough high-income housing. That, is that something that Marysville deals with?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think we're a little bit different than what Chico or Red Bluff deals with as far as doctors goes.
Closer to Sacramento for one thing.
Closer to Sacramento. So we actually have a lot of doctors that'll live, you know, in Roseville, Rockland area or Sacramento that, that will come up. But, you know, it's still, market rate housing still is, really for us, it's probably a bigger issue than the low-income housing. And, um, you know, it's a different thing. It's a challenging thing for developers when they look at demographics, they look at household incomes and they say, okay, what's it, what's the feasibility? Plus, in California, with the cost of construction and the cost to develop and all the red tape that developers have to go through in order to build an apartment complex or in order to build that higher-end housing, you know, issues like SEQA, right? And where there's a lot of red tape that they have to cut through. And every time they have to cut through red tape, it prolongs a project. They've, the, the fees, the rates, everything's increased to a level where it's really unaffordable for developers to build market rate housing unless they're in a more of an affluent area. And so these are all regulatory issues that, you know, I plan on, on addressing and, and bringing reform to.
You referenced SEQA. So for people who don't know, it's the California Environmental Quality Act, right? And you said issues like SEQA. Are there certain things about within that that you think are problematic?
Well, look, I'm, and I, and I want to be clear. I think we need to be good stewards of our environment, right? But I also think that we're a part of that environment. We need to be conscientious of how we impact it. But when we, when we put certain restrictions that, that force developers to jump through, um, environmental reporting and, and projects could potentially be shut down because of a specific type of insect or a specific type of snake, you know, there's ways to be conscientious about that and to recognize, okay, maybe we need to go into more of a rural area and develop something that's more, um, inclined to their habitat. But we've got to learn how to mitigate that efficiently and just not shut it down, right? And so, um, you know, it's, it's something that, that I think is going to continue to, SEQA is going to continue to prohibit housing development in the state of California. And if we don't start building more units, our housing prices are just going to go up. These interest rates are going to change. They're already talking about, you know, a small cut in September and maybe another one by the end of the year. And as that happens and those mortgage payments become a little bit more affordable, you're going to see buyers come into the market. And when that happens, we're just, we're not building enough units to be able to absorb those buyers and we're going to see prices go up even higher, you know? So for younger generations, folks that are coming into their 30s and out of their 30s or trying to buy their first home, how do you do it in California? You know, it's tough and, um, it's a real challenge. Um, it, it all trickles, it all connects together, right? And, and so we've got to make it more affordable to build housing, bottom line.
Okay. Uh, let's talk more about your decision to go from city council member to state assembly member. What are some of the other key drivers beside what we've already spoken about?
So just a little bit about, you know, my background, et cetera. I'm fourth generation in Marysville. My great-grandfather came as a Basque immigrant and, uh, and he was a sheep herder. And he landed in Marysville in 1906, opened a Basque hotel. And, uh, and then by the time he passed away, he ended up with about 6,000 head of sheep. And I'm always inspired by that. And I tell that story a lot because it's a beautiful story about coming out of really nothing. He didn't have anything when he came here. And working hard and working smart and the opportunities that he had and the opportunities that this country affords people to be able to grow and prosper and, and benefit. So we've been involved in Marysville since then and lots of different business ventures, as I've kind of already talked about. But Julia, my wife and I, we got married 11 years ago. And, and we talked about really where we wanted to settle down. And Northern California has always been home. Her family goes back as far as my family goes. And we said, no, this is, this is where we want to be, right? We could pick up, we could go anywhere in the country, anywhere in the world, right? Start over. And we said, no, this is home. This is where we want to be. This is where our roots are. And we want to raise our family here. And so we started getting involved. We had a lot of conversations about, you know, hey, if we're going to be here, we're the type of people that don't just, you know, um, sit in the back corner of the back row, right? If we're going to be somewhere, we're going to get involved. We're going to try to be a positive impact on our community. Um, we're both very active in our local church and also other different organizations with inside the community. And so we said, okay, we're going to do this. We're going to help contribute to Marysville, Yuba County, Yuba City, Sutter County, and be a positive impact. So that started down a journey of just kind of community service, right? Joining different organizations. I started serving on different committees, boards, local association of realtors. Um, and, and then with my commitment to service and then real estate background, development background, farming background, et cetera, I was asked to sit on the Marysville Planning Commission. And I'm like, oh my gosh. My uncle comes out of, of some political background. So I wasn't naive to the fact that once you start to engage in the public service round, it's like, okay, where does this thing go? So I served on the, the, the Planning Commission and then was asked to run for city council.
Okay.
And, and did a term on city council, really with the heart and with the mind of, okay, this is a way to have a seat at the table, be a voice in the community and hopefully bring positive results to the city of Marysville. And I think in that 10-year on the Marysville City Council, we saw really a lot of positive things come out of that. We were able to develop adopted park programs, um, really began to get things moving forward on Ellis Lake cleanup, some of these development issues that we were talking about, et cetera. So, yeah. So from there, you know, it was like, well, what's, what's next, right? And so, um, really this kind of resulted out of a conversation I had with our current Assemblyman Gallagher. And it was, you know, and I worked with James when I was on the city council. Uh, we had some different issues that we had to tackle that were state-related. And, uh, and so we got to work together pretty closely in some of those issues. Plus, I've known him for many years. And so, um, you know, out of that conversation, uh, the seed was planted to consider maybe running for this assembly position.
So, you know, and I wanted to ask you about that, actually, because he was very quick to endorse you. I think it maybe surprised some people too, that that endorsement came out from him, which is a big deal. I've heard some people speculate that you've had personal or business relationships uh, with him or his chief of staff. So how can people who are voting for you just be sure that the endorsement is, you know, merit-based?
Sure. So, you know, I, I understand that there's been some rumors about he and I being in business together on different things. You know, he was, the, the real estate firm that I'm with, he was one of the founding partners in that firm. But I've never been in any real estate transactions or any type of deals or, or, you know, any type of those issues or whatnot with James. Um, and I speak, you know, pretty, you know, he's a good friend of mine too, right? So, um, but bottom line was, is that conversation about considering running, that conversation happened in the summer of '23.
Okay.
Okay. So from '23, I did a lot through '24 and going into '25 um, that, that I think he was able to witness really my work ethic, my commitment to the North State, um, my knowledge on the issues and the things that we were facing. So, um, in '24, I didn't seek reelection onto the Marysville City Council. And in lieu of that, I wanted to be active in last election cycle because it was one of the most important elections, I think, of our lifetime. And so I created an organization called Free California. And we championed some different issues. We were focused on some different propositions and some other conservative, you know, elections that were in the state. But, um, the, you know, the thing that took front and center was Prop 36. And so we actually did some signature drives up here in Chico in order to get it on the ballot. Um, and then once it was on the ballot, we continued to canvass neighborhoods. We continued to hold forums and we, we worked. We put the work in. And the state passed it by almost 70%. You're aware of that. And so, um, you know, I think through that time and, and, and through that relationship, um, James really got to see what I can deliver and what I can do and how passionate I am about, um, you know, helping people, but also, you know, benefiting our community in the North State. And so, you know, there might be some speculation that this is just a handed over endorsement. But that's really not the truth, you know, it was earned. And there was a lot of conversations that I had with him that was like, you know, you've, you've, you've got the drive and the desire to do it, but, you know, I don't know who else is going to run, et cetera. So even though it was encouraged, it wasn't guaranteed. And it definitely wasn't a set-up deal by any means, right? And, uh, and so once, you know, we announced our campaign in December and, uh, towards the end of January, I'd already raised a hundred thousand dollars into the campaign. And so we saw a lot of community support. Um, tremendous amount of endorsements that came out of the Yuba-Sutter area. Lots of electeds, lots of farmers, lots of business community members that know me, know who I am, know what I stand for. And very quickly, the Yuba-Sutter community came on board with the campaign. And so once, you know, I think James kind of saw that local commitment and realized that I was serious about running for Assembly, then he said, okay, then I'll endorse Don. So that's really when that endorsement happened.
Okay. So say, say you get the job, right?
Sure.
Um, tell me what you think right now about how the state is managing public schools? And is there anything that you would change about it?
Well, you know, if you, if you dig into some of my social media, website, et cetera, um, education's a big topic for me. And the reason is because I've got four kids under the age of 10, right? And it's kind of funny.
Congratulations.
Thanks. You know, I tell people...
Do you sleep?
No, not much. Between life and campaign and work and family, yeah. I wish I could get some more sleep. But, um, nonetheless, you know, their, their future is a big driving force as to why I do what I do, um, whether it's career or whether it's politics, right? And, um, so, you know, talking about our education system in California, I've seen and have dealt with personally, you know, a lot of the issues and a lot of the laws that are coming down the line that are impacting our education, whether it comes down to curriculum or whether it comes down to parent involvement or whether it comes down to safety in schools, right? Um, and so, so a lot of those different issues that we're facing in California in regards to what's being taught to our kids. And then parents' choice, like as far as what school to go to, you know? AB 84 came down the line and I think it's sitting in, in Senate right now that's cutting funding from homeschool programs and, and also, you know, charter schools that are homeschool-based, right? And, you know, I don't think that that's appropriate. If it's, if it's an accredited school by the state of California, then that funding needs to be available and the parents need to have the choice or the opportunity to be able to send their kid to that school. If that's how they want to go about it, right? And so that's just one example, right? I mean, parents' rights issues are another, another example.
Do you think with like the current curriculum, the standard curriculum, if you go to a standard public school in California, do you think that there are things in that curriculum that are problematic?
I think that there's things in regards to California's curriculum that introduces topics to students at too early. topics to students at too early of an age. So, when we're talking about, you know, sexual education, we're talking about the discussion of gender and we're talking about those things, you know, I think that it's too early in a child's life to be introducing some of those topics. And I think that's really alarming to a lot of parents, especially parents in our communities, right? More rural, a little bit more conservative communities in California say, wait a minute, I don't want that conversation to happen with my child yet, right? And so.
I've heard people have concerns or claims that there's something more insidious than that, essentially maybe that there's some sort of liberal ideology, like an agenda to try to indoctrinate children in the public schools to be more left-leaning. Do you have those sort of thoughts or fears?
I think you have to be conscientious about, you know, agendas, right? I mean, agendas are everywhere and lots of different people have them. When you see certain legislators bring legislation forward that opens up doors for, for those types of topics and issues to come in, then I think you have to be conscientious of it and you have to be aware of it, right? But, I think ultimately what you have to do as a parent, you have to have a solid family environment, a solid relationship with your kids and, and be able to tackle some of those conversations and some of those issues with your kids from the home front. The challenge is, is when some of those topics and some of those conversations are happening at school between your child and somebody at the school, whether it's a teacher or counselor or somebody in administration. And, and then that conversation doesn't have to be reported back to the parent.
Yeah.
That, that becomes an issue where, you know, and the appearance of it is, is that the state wants to, the government wants to have more influence in that conversation with the child rather than having the parent in the center of that conversation.
I'm sure you're aware of the whole issue that started years back with Chico Unified School District and the mom essentially went and sued the school because the district said that they couldn't tell her that the child decided to go by a different gender.
Right.
And she felt completely left out and
Sure.
they said, well, it's the state law. Our hands are tied here. And I believe that state law is still stands in place right now.
Well, so AB 1955 is still in place.
Uh huh.
Right? And that's the law that, and it's actually discretionary. So, the school district, I believe, can, can communicate back, but they don't have to communicate back to the parent. And so, that's kind of the, the thing on the parents' rights issue. That's the law that really got a lot of this stirred up, right? And there's been other districts in the state that have challenged that. And there's kind of been a tug-of-war back on this.
It's an interesting conversation because, I mean, as a parent myself, of course, my gut reaction is like, I, I need to know what's going on
100%.
with my kids.
Yeah.
Then you hear the other argument and as a journalist, you know, I listen to all sides and I really try to take it into consideration, argument being that some families who might not be accepting of, say, a 12-year-old who was born a boy decides, feels like, you know, that he is a girl and that there might be some sort of consequences at home, you know, where the child is mistreated because of it. So, to me, that was the explanation I was told. What do you think of that?
Sure. And I've heard that argument, you know, in regards to this issue. And my question is, is like, I know a lot of 12-year-olds, they're very confused about who they are, their bodies are changing, you know? And, and so, I understand that there may be concerns that a parent might not react appropriately, but there's avenues already in place, you know, as far as reporting goes. If, if a parent or if a teacher or somebody in the school is identifying that there's issues at home and they're not reporting those issues already and then they're going to hide behind AB 1955 as a reason not to have that conversation with the parents, what were you doing previously when some of those red flags were already coming up, right? So, there's already preventative laws on the books in order to help identify that maybe this isn't a safe home environment.
Yeah.
But, what it does is it, it's a, it's a, and I was just down at a rally on AB 495 and it does kind of the same thing. There's an issue that's identified, says, hey, this might be a concern and we're going to use that as the anchor in order to create policy that's going to affect 40 million people in the state of California.
Yeah.
And so, they, they do one-size-fits-all legislation and, and those, that's not right, right? It's one thing to identify, okay, maybe here's an issue, here's a child who's confused, maybe wants to do some different things, we're really concerned about how a parent's reaction's going to be. That's something to have a conversation about, but to blanket it and give all administrators, all schools, all teachers, the ability not to tell parents or report back to parents when these crucial conversations are happening and the parent needs to be at that table. We've got a great home life. I mean, my wife is an amazing mom. There's no way I'd be able to do the things that I do if she wasn't doing what she does. If my child has a conversation about gender, confused in regards to gender or any other issue, self-harm or anything like that, we're not one of those dangerous parents that might have a bad reaction, yet we're subject in, you know, to AB 1955. And that's not right. And I think I speak out for a lot of parents in California and I don't necessarily think it's a conservative or liberal issue. When you start to mess with people's kids, parents, whether they're Democrats or Republicans, they have problems. Don't touch my kids, don't influence my kids. And, and I think that's something that needs better representation in California and that voice.
Yeah. So, well, since we're on this topic, then of course I have to ask you about a seemingly unsolvable issue and it's the transgender athletes issue.
Yeah.
Especially in the schools with school sports. I mean, what do you think the solution is to that problem?
So, I, I mean, I'm not bashful about it. I take a really hard-line stance that I don't think a biological boy should be playing girls' sports. And the, the first thing that comes to mind is the safety issue of it, right? So, when you're talking about a, a boy that's grown up biologically and is developed stronger and, and, you know, different than a girl and you're going to put that boy into a girls' sport, like let's say softball, for example, and they're pitching from 60 feet and that ball's not coming at 60 or 65 miles an hour, it's coming at 90, 95 and at that distance, maybe even faster, right? It can really become a hazard and, and a danger to that girl that's standing in the batter's box.
Yeah.
And so, I look at the safety issue of it first and, and say, okay, hey, this isn't, this just doesn't make sense. And that's part of the problem with a lot of these things, like it just doesn't make sense. And that's what we've got to do in California is come back to common sense. And I understand that there's people that are confused about, you know, how they were born or, and trying to make decisions in their life and trying to discover who they are. But, it shouldn't impact all the girls that are trying to compete in their sports. And, and then, you know, we saw this with the Riley Gaines topic, right? And the issue is in the swimming, right? It's just not fair, right?
Yeah.
And, and, and we've got to be conscientious of that.
So, you know, one thing you said was come back to common sense, but obviously there are a lot of people who have more progressive mindsets, right? Things are changing, the world's changing, whether we like it or not.
Sure.
If you were our state assembly member, would you be willing to kind of forward-think to a certain degree, like compromise? Like I've heard pitches like, maybe there should be a third category of sports for trans athletes, right? So, it's not the way things were.
Sure.
But, we're, you know, trying to meet in the middle somewhere.
I think what, what you have to do is have the mindset and, and this is something that I've had a lot of conversations with Assemblyman Gallagher about and something that he identified and recognized in me and he obviously carries the same attribute, is that you have to be able to have difficult conversations with people that you don't agree with, regardless of what the topic is. Yet, still not compromise on who you are and what your values are and, and the position that you stand in, right? But, be able to have those conversations, understand where the other side's coming from and try to find the solution to the problem, right? That's really what it is. And a lot of times, the solution comes in different categories, right? And, and it's not just one answer to a really big issue or a really big problem.
Yeah.
And, or a really big question. And so, you, you have to be able to sit down and have that conversation. And through my business career and just life in general, I'm accustomed to having to sit down and have hard conversations with people, especially folks that are on different perspectives or have different agendas and say, okay, you want this and you want that, how do we come to the, the middle? How do we come to a place where we can get the problem solved? How do we come to the place where we can move forward from this, right?
Yeah.
And so, you have to have that conversation.
Okay. So, for people who are considering voting for you, but they don't really know you yet, I'm just going to ask you a couple of other questions, less politics and more just who are you?
Sure, sure.
So, for you, weekend with the wife and kids and you have two days to do whatever you want to do, what are you guys going to be up to?
A couple of different things. Depends on time of year, but we actually, good question because we actually do this a lot. So, we'll run up to, you know, Tahoe, Chucky area. We love the outdoors, very avid fishing, hunting, recreation. So, we'll spend a lot of time on the lake with the boat. We'll get up into higher elevation where it's cooler. You know, I love the fact of where we live
Yeah.
in Northern California because everything's so accessible, right? So, there's a lot of weekends where we're just like, hey, let's go over to the coast for a couple of days and, you know, let the kids have some beach time and get out of the hot weather, et cetera. Wintertime, you know, once again, love going up into the mountains in the snow. And so, yeah, that's a, that's either the mountains or the coast.
So, with the kids, do we talk about Santa Claus, Tooth Fairy, Easter Bunny? Or do you feel like that's, you know, lying to your kids early on in life? That's a dilemma I faced.
You know, we've had that conversation.
Yeah.
Right? And, you know, we've done the Santa Claus thing and gone down that road. I was raised that way. I'm not scarred by it.
It's a fun tradition, but yeah.
It's a fun, fun tradition. Some, I know, there's that, there's that aspect, it's a weird thing, you know? But, you know, we're, and we're not, we don't carry that on and for, for too, too long in their life, you know?
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, we are, we're really solid in our faith, right? And so, like, you know, one, one aspect on the Easter bunny thing, right? Okay, there's egg hunts and there's that type of thing. So, we talk about like what the Easter bunny is, et cetera. But, really like during that time of the year, our focus is on what that real, real holiday is about.
Right.
And that's the foundation that we're building into our kids.
Okay. So, for you as a grown-up adult, do you, is there any room in your brain to believe in things like ghosts, aliens, Bigfoot?
You know, this is an interesting question. I mean, bottom line, I'm, I'm a Christian and I believe in Jesus.
Yeah.
Right? And, and I put my faith and I put my hope into him, right? So, these different things, aliens and ghosts and whatnot, I don't know.
Theoretically, so I had a pastor on and we actually, I asked him sort of a similar question. I'm just always curious about that. And he did kind of have like a Holy Ghost sort of story, you know?
Sure.
I mean, because a lot of Christians would believe, right? That there is a spirit present here on earth that is inexplicable to us, kind of.
I think that there is good, I think there's evil.
Yeah.
And I think that we are in the balance of this metaphorical warfare between good and evil. So, when you're talking about different things like ghosts, et cetera, whatnot, sure, is there evil influence in, in some of those things? Are there things that happen that people can't explain or experiences people happen that, that can't be explained? Sure. Those things happen, you know? So, whether it's a ghost or not, I, you know, I don't know, but is there a negative influence that I think is happening in our, in our world and in our culture? Yeah. And there's also a positive influence, right? And so, but we're, we hang in the balance on those things.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So, no Bigfoot, okay.
No Bigfoot for me.
Okay. Chocolate, sweet kind of dessert guy or salty, savory, spicy?
Both, actually. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I love my ice cream sundaes, no doubt about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? But, I actually, you know, have in, in recent years, have actually started to get more spicy on stuff.
Yeah, me too, me too.
Yeah, yeah. I think what happens is over time, your taste buds kind of soften a little bit and so, you need that extra, that extra heat to spice it up.
I always tell my kids that. It makes my dinner more exciting.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you guys eat a lot of rice since you're a rice farmer?
We do.